Director Anderson.
Present.
Director Riordan.
Present.
Director Yohan.
Here.
Director Schoberg.
Here.
Director Sorkin. And Director Sunquist is here. Tonight, we are missing Director Lotiger, Director Addy, and Director Tamaral. So we have six board members present tonight. At this time, I will ask for approval of agenda, and if anyone has any to be, I'll ask for the agenda to be approved or amended, and I will accept a motion.
Man and Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the amend, approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Memo or motion by Director Riordan, support by Director Schoberg, any discussion? We'll do, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. At this time, there are no, there is no visitor input, so we will move on to the consent agenda, and I will ask, ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented or amended.
So moved.
Motion by Director Anderson, is there support?
Support, Riordan.
Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss separately a couple of the items, please.
Which ones?
Payment of the bills, four point three. And four point twelve and four point thirteen.
Is that it?
Yes.
Polly, what was the other one?
Four twelve, four thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
So with those taken off the consent agenda to be discussed separately, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. So let's go ahead and dive right into four point three.
I think I just am going to reiterate an observation I've had before, is on the payment of the bills, we've got merchants in Gilbert and in Evolith for some of these services and products, and if not, if nothing else, to put them on a rotating basis, like groceries with Evolith IGA, it seems like they're, it's always super one, and then I see some for oil and gas. We have, we have a station in Virgin, uh, Evolith and one in Gilbert. I know Alvin Fail, they've got the diesel. I know that might be a problem. We used to have a gas station in Evolith that had diesel, but it doesn't, but I still think Fail does. And then maybe for some printing and paper products, we have a print shop in Evolith, and we have, I think, some graphics places. So I, again, I'd like to see some, what's the word, of those merchants too.
Okay.
I don't know who's in charge of making those decisions, but...
I can certainly follow up with Spencer and with Director, or with Dr. Schmidt. Four twelve was extracurricular positions for Evolith and Gilbert campuses.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one's four twelve and which one's four thirteen, but under the, um, clubs.
Can we talk about them both at the same time?
Yeah, the clubs, um, the clubs. I, I see that there's a gay straight alliance club, no pay, Paula Larson. I don't remember that coming before the board ever, or is this, by passing this, are we approving all of these clubs and all of these activities? And then again, I can barely read it. It's down, it's unread, WA something. We are one team, a diversity club, there's nothing there, but I wondered if that had anything to do with our diversity and inclusion coordinator from the NLC?
We actually don't have a diversity and inclusion coordinator.
Okay, it's on this list though, so, but...
Not a diversity and inclusion coordinator. That might be a club, but we don't have a diversity and inclusion coordinator in our school.
Well, the club is on this list, and I just know that we belong to the NLC, and I'm wondering if there's going to be some...
There's no correlation between that club and the NLC.
We are part of the NLC, and we have an inclusion and diversity and equity coordinator that we belong to.
The NLC has that, our school does not.
Okay, so...
And this is regarding a club that students want to have as part of our campus, and so if you don't want to approve that club, you can make that motion.
Okay, well, so by passing these four point twelve and four point thirteen, we are approving all of everything that's on these two lists? Is that the case? I don't know that they've come to the board separately as...
I don't know that the board has to approve every club that's before us.
I think we have schedule B or C or something in the, in the contracts, and those are activities.
Well, I think that some of these people that are doing these clubs are not getting paid for it, so it doesn't require approval of the board. And Dr. Schmidt can correct me if I'm wrong.
Noel, could you clarify, please?
He's shaking his head no, so I am not wrong.
Shaking his head no, no what?
That clubs that do not have advisors who are paid do not need to come before the school board for approval.
For their, not even for their existence? So if they're paid, they get approval if they're not, what about volunteers? We, we approve volunteer coaches and activity people all the time.
Here's the thing, if you want to approve or have a motion that we do not accept these clubs at this time, you can go ahead and make that.
That's fine. I'm asking for answers. I have questions about this, and then I'll, I'll be able to vote, yes or no, but I just wanted answers to my question.
My, my understanding is that if we have a club on our list, and no one signs up for it, even, even though we may have an advisor, that advisor does not get paid, and there is no formal club.
But it, if it's on this list, is it an approved club by this, by us, if it's on this list? We have one that has no extra pay, but we have a person, Paula Larson.
So what is your?
I'm still trying to follow, what is your question here? What do you?
Is this, is this a list of approved activities and clubs from our school district? And the second page is green. We've got PLC coordinators. Those look like teaching things, yearbook.
The purpose of them being on the consent agenda was for the board to approve them. If you would like to make a motion to exclude and not approve certain clubs, you can do so.
Okay, so that, that answers my question, so I guess we can vote on, on that separately.
Are you making a motion?
No. But I will vote when, when the motion comes.
So we're done with that?
So there was four point twelve and four point one three was approval of the proposed extracurricular positions for the Evolith and Gilbert campuses and the Virginia campus.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Riordan, is there support?
I support.
Support by Director Anderson, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries five to one. Moving on to agenda item five, five point...
Do we vote on four three?
No, I think Polly was just looking for information, and so, oh, we have, we do actually have to approve payment of the bills, but I can follow up with that information. So is there a motion to pay bills?
So moved.
Motion by Schoberg, is there support?
Support.
Support by Yohan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries five to one. Agenda item five, our reports, and five point one is Indian Education Program Update by Teresa Nikee.
Wujun.
Welcome.
Hello. So, um, as you, you probably know, our...
You might just have to speak a little bit more.
There.
Thank you.
Our indigenous programs, our financial comes out of state and federal money, so a lot of the things that we have, we just seek for like approval and a good correspondence with the board. So I'm here to really thank you for supporting our indigenous programs. I really do feel like we have been supported, so I want to continue that. Some of the highlights up until date, our summer diversity program, we were in partnership with the Northland Learning Foundation. We received a grant for twenty-five hundred dollars. We partnered with the Northland Diversity, Northland Foundation, and we did diversity programming for teachers and students. So we had a great number of students, like eight to ten students come and participate in the program. They were like, had a chance to really talk about how they feel coming to Rock Ridge Public Schools. We had speakers and presenters that were diversity, whether they were Hispanic or American Indian, but they really helped our students open up, because I think in the classroom, they don't have a chance to open up. So at this summer diversity program, we had some really good input from the students. So we're using that input and that data to continue on with our indigenous programs right now. Another great highlight, our, your teachers from Rock Ridge, whether it be Virginia or Evolith or Franklin or whatever campus, they are eager, they're like interested in learning about culture, learning about diversity, and so they're requesting information from us. So we are like kind of overloaded with going into the classrooms, going into helping teachers and helping students. So that's a plus, I think, for our community, that our teachers are eager for that information. So we need to like capitalize on that and continue to grow our diversity programs and teach in all of us how to love each other and accept, accept each other. Some of the things from that program were orange shirt day, which was, if you don't know, a representation of the boarding schools and residential schools. So we had a number of staff and students wearing orange shirts, in a like a, a silent but strong statement of, we understand real history, we understand real truth, and we are going to like support this. We also had wild rice days, we also had indigenous cultural days. The teachers are eager for that, and so thank you, it's a good word, for supporting that. We, at the elementary level, we started an ogima club. Ogima means leadership, so we started a leadership club. So I think starting leadership and self-pride and believing in who, in who you are at the elementary level is where it's going to start. So we started an ogima club at the elementary level, so I'm so excited to see where that program goes. We also started a newsletter. The newsletter is going to be teaching teachers, it's specifically for teachers, but I'm, well, I will send it to you if, if the board wants. It's about the leadership and the commitment and the, the pride that American Indians have and what we're trying to teach our, our students, but we're also trying to teach our teachers, like this is what you need to know. This is like the real history, and this is, if you, if we can give them some resources, I think that would be awesome. So we're doing that. Mental health, so I'm going through the highlights. We, on your agenda tonight is an MOU with Boysford Reservation, for an MOU for mental health services. So that would be that Boysford will provide mental health services through Zoom, through some of our, to some of our students. That's greatly needed. And I will go over and over how much we need more social services, mental health support, services for our students, because right now, we have some, but it's not enough. I mean, it's scary right now to think that some of our students are to the edge of suicide and breaking down and not committed, not fulfilling high school. Mental health is like a big deal right now. And so one of the highlights of our program is we have commit, we did do an MOU, so I hope you approve it tonight, for Boysford, for mental health services. And I will work with other reservations to continue that MOU, because we, because we don't only service Boysford students. We have Leech Lake, we have Red Lake, we have other students in our reserve, in our district. So I would really like for this to be the beginning steps of like mental health. And this would be a great step for the school board to like sign this MOU, but also, we have a check-in connect program that's doing amazing things right now. It's showing great data, it's showing that we really need more mental health, more social services. So I'm just really putting a plug in for that. Some of the lows, COVID, COVID and the impacts, that really affected a lot of mental health students. For, for example, our sixth graders, were in COVID last year. They really struggled, and now we put them back in the classroom, they're really struggling. And we can ask the high school counselors and high school teachers, they are really struggling right now with our, with our sixth grade and seventh grade students. So I, I think I really need to be, put a big plug in for mental health issues right now. Short staffed, we've been short staffed for, up until now, and you just hired a new, new staff member, so thank you. I think she's going to be great. And so with that, becomes more services to Evolith, because we haven't been able to service Evolith campuses until now. So now that we have our third person, we can really schedule some time in Evolith and at the high school level and at the elementary level, so I'm looking forward to that. Just some numbers for the high school. Virginia, we have seventy-one Native American students who identify as Native American students, and Evolith, six. Elementary Parkview, we have thirty-two, Roosevelt forty-seven, forty-six, Franklin, eleven, and Gilbert, eleven. So we, our numbers are lowering in the Evolith-Gilbert campus, and so we are trying to schedule our time serviced over there to meet the best service that we can over there for the number of students we have. Right now, our, our main section is over here at the Virginia School, but we do recognize that we are going to go over to Evolith, and I am committed to going over there at least one day a week to make sure that our server, our students are served at Evolith and Gilbert. Future goals, besides just continuing the resources for teachers and the parents and students, some of the things that I invite you to Fall Fest, which will be November, we don't have a, a date yet, but that's a time for all of our native families to come together, because a lot of times, we don't see each other. We're off in our own different worlds, and I think we need to come together and celebrate each other. So Fall Fest is coming up in November. I will get an invitation out to the superintendent, and he will relay that on to you. Winter Indigenous Games has been very positive in our district, and this year, we are going to host it on Evolith Campus, so that's going to be a great combination of communities. And then we also want to have a spring power. So there's a lot of great things happening, a lot of highs, some lows, but for the most part, it's been awesome. The school year has been kind of strange in a way with, with COVID and not knowing with the masks and things, but it's very positive, and we're looking forward to a great year. If you guys have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to thank you for the enthusiasm that you bring to the Indian Education Program here at Rock Ridge. You're super positive and enthusiastic, and so not just supporting the kids and supporting the non-native kids who want to learn more and the teachers, but really getting those kids to thrive in the schools and to be proud of their heritage. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we do open up our rooms to all diversity. Like I mentioned, last time I was here speaking, I was emotional and things like, but I am, we open up our, our building to all diversity, whether you're black or American Indian or lesbian or whoever. If you're diverse and you feel like you don't belong, please come to our room. Please come see us. Please let us help you, because we can provide some resources for you. Like we do love our, our children and our, our students, and we do believe in the school board, and I think you guys make a hard decision, and sometimes maybe I don't agree with it, but it's just a hard decision, and yeah, so I think Rock Ridge is going to be very positive.
I think so too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, agenda item five point two is Principal Angie Williams. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. The first month and a half has gone by already, and it has come quicker than, than ever. This last Friday was our midterm already for the high school, so we are having midterm reports. I think we're mailed out today via email by our secretary Laura Tisoni after school today. Our conferences will be on November sixteenth from three thirty to seven, with the end of the quarter being November tenth. At the elementary, we have a new system for, we are not doing our quarter reports anymore. We don't have four quarters, K through six. On the Evolith-Gilbert side, we went to trimesters. So the trimester for our Franklin Elementary students will end on December second, and about a month before that trimester end, we'll have conferences with our parents. It'll be November first and November third from three thirty to seven. We'll try to catch those kids and the skills and the deficiencies we have before we have our trimester report cards out for Franklin Elementary. So that's something new for our families. October is College Knowledge Month, and I want to give a thanks to our counselors and to Alicia Schrader, our curriculum director and avid coordinator. They have planned activities for our students to promote college knowledge. One of the activities, I think you've seen in your agenda today, it's where the students at the high school level, there's a drawing every Friday. For any student who wore college wear on a Wednesday in the month of October, they get their name in a drawing for, on a Friday. If they fill out a college application, they get their name in a drawing. If they talk to a, we have schools, colleges that come in and meet with our students, so if they sign up to meet with one of those recruiters, college recruiters, they can get their name in a drawing. So we have the, every Friday is a drawing, and they pick two names, and they get a thirty dollar gift card from Holiday Gas Station. And that, again, was set up by the counselors and Alicia Schrader. At the elementary level, we have something going on too. They are going to, the K through six students will be decorating pumpkins in college theme, college wear. They take a picture of that pumpkin with their iPad, send it to Alicia Schrader, and their names will go into a drawing. We have grade band set up, so like K through two, three through four, fifth and sixth, and we are doing a drawing for thirty dollar gift certificates for Target to promote college knowledge at the elementary level. One thing that I want to say and get out to the senior parents and senior students is every October, the last week in October, twenty-fifth through the thirty-first, students can apply for colleges for free. They waive the application fee, and I don't know if any of you have filled out an application for college recently or have had your children do that, but it's about a hundred dollars, seventy-five dollars for every college application that you, you fill out. So that last week in October, if you have a senior, make sure they're filling out those college applications at that time, because they waive the fee, and you don't have to pay that. And we encourage students to apply to every Hibbing, you know, like Hibbing, Masabi, every Minnesota State College. Just apply for as many as you can, because it's free, whether you go to that college or not, because you know how kids can change their minds quite often. So just fill out any college application that last week of October, because it's free. So we want to get that message out to our senior students and families. Last week, we had homecoming at the high school, as, as many of you know. I want to say thank you to Ms. Diedrich and the student council members for all their hard work and time and effort. It is a very time-intensive activities to set up. They have to do the pep fest plan for that. They have to plan for all the games that they're going to be attending. They have to order homecoming shirts. We are trying to do some cooperation with the Virginia side, because their homecoming was at the same time, so there's a lot of communication going on back and forth, and there's some tough decisions that always go in that role, and I just want to thank Mrs. Diedrich and the students for doing the best job that they could, and we really appreciate all their time and effort. I also want to say thanks or congratulations to all the Homecoming Royalty Court, especially our Homecoming King, Nathan Nemec, and our Homecoming Queen, Emily Kemp. Congratulations to them. The end of this month at the high school, we have Turnabout, October thirtieth, and that's going to be in the City of Evolith Auditorium. Mr. Burrit, as the National Honor Society Advisor, and the students that are in National Honor Society, they actually are the ones that put on that dance. So I want, they're in the, in the midst of planning for that. Also, dealing with our National Honor Society, we have our National Honor Society induction, two days from tonight. It's, it's this Wednesday at six thirty at the Evolith-Gilbert High School Auditorium, and we have seventeen new induction, inductees into the National Honor Society. So seventeen students from the junior class, which is quite a high number. So that's, that's a good sign. At the Franklin Elementary, a couple of things that we've done in the month and a half is we've gotten our bus safety in. We had Fire Prevention Week last week, so I want to say thank you to the Evolith Fire Department for coming in and showing their big trucks and their water hoses and teaching about fire prevention. They do a nice job with our kids. It was a two-day activity. It was Thursday and Friday with, with our kids. So thank you to the Evolith Fire Department for doing that. Also related to Franklin Elementary, we have seven and a half months left in that building, and then we will no longer, we will no longer be in that building. We'll be in the Laurentian Elementary. We are, as I've taken tours throughout the process of its development and its construction, it's just turning out to be such an amazing building. It has such huge open spaces. We have heated floors in our pre-K and kindergarten rooms, which I think is wonderful. We have the indoor playground, the, the learning commons that are on each level in each wing, the small, if you have, or not small, but if you have, haven't been in the large group rooms, they're on the end of each wing, and two walls are total glass. So the natural light, I mean, I want that to be my office if we can make that happen. It's just a beautiful view, and I just, I... and I just, I can't even imagine teaching out of there or being in a small group in that area. It's just, it's just a beautiful space, those large group rooms. So if you haven't had a tour, make sure that you see that. So we're looking forward to the move. We've been using pilot furniture currently right now. I know that you were aware that we had pilot furniture. We were testing out furniture to see what we would like to order. Those, the furniture has been ordered, but we get to keep the pilot furniture. So all of our teachers, we kind of had a drawing, and they put in like what they would want. And so all of our teachers have some piece of new furniture in, right now currently, whether it's desks, the high tables with the high chairs, or there's bookcases, there's movable whiteboards. So we have, we're getting use out of all of our pilot furniture. All of that pilot furniture will be used at the Laurentian Elementary next year. It'll be in our, in our large group rooms that I was talking about, our small group rooms, our medium group rooms. It'll also be in our learning neighborhoods as well, that new furniture. And we're starting that process at the high school at the end of this month. We have to pick some teachers and some students to start looking at the furniture that we want in our new high school. So we're starting that process, which is exciting, to have our teachers and our students select furniture that they are going to like and use, and that will be conducive to teaching and learning in the 21st century here. So some good things happening. That's all I have to report, unless you have any questions for me.
I had a question. The conferences, are those Zoomed this year or in person?
We're in discussion, so thank you for asking that. We talked about that at a staff meeting at the high school in Evlith Gilbert. There was one teacher that really liked the way that we did it last year with the Zoom. It just was, at the high school level, when you have so many parents coming in, so there were, I think, more staff felt comfortable and would like to see the Zoom ones back like we did last year. I had a couple that didn't prefer that. So I'm actually bringing that to our principal's agenda to talk about that at the high school level. Elementary definitely will probably still stay in-person, but it's still up for debate on what we'll do at the high school. What did you prefer?
I thought the Zoom was very convenient. You know, it was, you know, scheduled it. It worked out really easy to schedule and hopped on from my house and just zoomed in. I thought it was, I thought it was really good.
Right, because then you don't have to go to the school and go and see your six or seven different teachers that your child has.
Yeah. This year will be different, because there was only, I think, with block scheduling, three or four, and now there's be six or seven. So maybe, maybe it won't be as convenient to Zoom this year, but last year I thought it was super slick.
And I did hear some, from some parents last year that they liked that as well, instead of waiting in line in the hallways to talk to the teacher. You know, you're at home in your own, in your own comfort, and to be able to do conferences that way. I think I did hear a lot of positive feedback from a few parents as well. So we're going to be talking about that and see if that's the route we want to go.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Angie, I have a question or clarification. So going into Franklin, going from quarters to semesters, do parents have, I'm not familiar, because I don't have grandkids or kids, but is there like a parent portal that they can keep track if their children are falling behind? I'm just wondering if going to semesters, is that conducive to them falling behind?
I don't think it's conducive to them falling behind. What I've heard from the elementary teachers moving to a trimester, it's actually giving them more time to get to know the kids, to be more, you know, accurately, when they, when they have that conference with the meeting, they've had the, with the parents, they've had more time with those students to kind of learn where their strengths are and where there aren't. So the teachers are really, I think, are a proponent for it. We'll see it, how they, how it goes at the end of the year when we reevaluate it. But I know that's what their first initial thoughts, is that it's going to be better. And they do have parent portal access to power schools, just like they do at the high school level. It's also there at the elementary.
And is that where the parents keep track of grades and things?
Yep, the grades are there as well.
So that's like a responsibility on families to keep track of that? So we don't have any like, I don't know, we used to have in high school, I don't know if they ever did it in grade school, is like, we used to count failure notices or something, mid-quarter, and then, you know, but maybe falling behind, you need a little more help notices?
Right, and that's what we did, like today. Midterms went out, and it doesn't matter if you were failing or if you're getting an A, everybody gets one. So it's basically like a report card. That's what it really is. So we don't just say you're getting a midterm deficiency report anymore. We just give all students and families an update on where they're at.
And that's at the elementary too?
At the elementary, I think they do midterm reports as well. But it wouldn't be a midterm anymore. It would be semester, I guess.
Yeah, well, okay, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
And as Spencer makes his way up here, I just want to remind those in the audience to, if you're, I can't tell if some people don't have their masks up, but we do need to have those masks up due to the mask mandate. So if you don't put your masks up, I would invite you to leave.
Ready? Okay. Tonight, I was asked to come and talk about COVID-related expenditures and grants that we've received. The board did receive an email a few weeks ago with this information on there. So I'll just kind of give some highlights, and if you have any questions, you can ask those at the end. So the spreadsheet that I sent out to everybody had last year, last school year's information. So all the things we spent, from hand sanitizer to bottled water, because we couldn't use the water fountains, to extra staff, all the hotspots that were sent out to students so that when they were distance learning, they could get on Wi-Fi at their homes. The total amount we spent last year through these and received grants for was just about $1.2, almost $1.3 million. And there was a number of different grants throughout the year. From St. Louis County gave us a grant of $90,000. We had some from the state of Minnesota, several from the federal government. And almost all of those grants were based on free and reduced lunch count throughout the state of Minnesota. So especially the federal and the state, the state would have so much money, and they would meter it out to different, all the districts based on free and reduced lunch count. We still had to apply for it and get approved of all of our expenditures, but it wasn't a situation where you could ask for more. There's kind of the finite amount that you could get in those, in those areas. And we do have a number of grants that we still will be using for this school year and then up to the next two school years beyond this. If you remember during the budget process, we earmarked all of S R 2 funds to help plug the hole of this current school year, the 21-22 school year. That's about $1.9 million that we'll be using so that we didn't have to reduce as much staff and have other expenditures come out of the general fund. And then there are also S R 3 funds available for us, and those have yet to be earmarked. Those will be looked at over the course of this year, and if we need them to plug holes for next school year or even the one beyond, or depending on how this all goes this school year, if we have to make additional purchases, we would have to do, we could do that out of those dollars. So we have about $6.5 million still available to help from anything COVID-related to funding related, such as if we're losing students and we're losing funding because of that, we can kind of backfill using these dollars so we don't have to make as many reductions, similar to what we did this year. So if you have any questions, I know some people did email me with specific questions, but if you have some more, I'd be happy to try to answer them tonight.
Spencer, did you say whether or not that $6.5 million, is that from S R 3 or is that from various funding sources?
So that includes S R 2, the $1.9 from this year. And then S R 3 is actually split into two separate grants. There's one for $3.5 million and one for about $893,000. And then we had a little bit of carryover of the S R, S R 1, I believe it is. And those all totaled together is about $6.5.
Okay, thank you.
Spencer, are the, the S R 3 Learning Recovery Funds available? Is that the ARP S R 3s? Is it just a different name for it? Wasn't that the most recent funds that we got?
Yes, these are the most recent ones. The S R 3 were the last ones that they did late last year. So none of those are earmarked, and we don't have those dollars actually, until you spend them, you don't get them.
Are those the ones that they gave two-thirds and then one-third is, they gave two-thirds of it, they released it, and then the one-third is coming, or is that?
No, not that I'm aware of, no. None of these are actually in our possession yet until you spend them, until you give the federal government exactly how you're going to spend them, and then actually spend the dollars. Then you can get the dollars after that.
So the $893,000 plus some changes that ARP S R ones? The Learning Recovery Funds?
Yes, those are the S R 3 Learning Recovery.
Anyone else have questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think there's some confusion, and I think I'd like to make a comment on this. A lot of people are under the impression, and I've had a lot of people ask me about COVID funds tied to masking. And a lot of people think that we received or we accepted funds or we're masking because we accepted funds. Now, I've had a conversation with Spencer about this, and I was trying to find the answer. And I told him and a few other people, and I asked him, you know, what he knew, because he works with these figures all the time and the criteria and everything. And I said, "As far as I can see and find, that masking is only a recommendation from the Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC. And we can use those funds for those purposes, but it's not a criteria for receiving those funds that we have to mask." And I think that's caused a lot of confusion, maybe discontent and maybe some problems. And as far as I know, and I don't believe that they are mandated, you don't have to do masks to use the funds. I just wanted to try and clear that up.
Yes, thank you for saying that. I did look into it after controversy that we all heard, and nowhere could I find anywhere that it said masks were tied to any of the grants. So I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you, Spencer. And you're up for 5.4, the debt levy verification for taxes payable 2022.
Yeah, so I think there were some questions on this as well. So we brought this to the board. This was on the levy that we approved last board meeting. But this is just so you could see the numbers broken out and how that works exactly. So we have two types of debt, the school district does. One is the OPEB debt, and that is to be paid for retiree health insurance, what we paid for in Rock Ridge. That debt has been, I think it was, was it 2011 that started, somewhere around there? 2017 is when we refinanced to get a better rate on the payback. So that's about $778,000. And then the school building is about $11.2 million. Now, as part of the levy, the state of Minnesota says we have to levy 105% of those dollars. And that's in case people don't pay their property taxes, we still would have the money to pay our debt. Now, what happens is if all 100% of the state pays their property taxes, we obviously would get 105%, and we don't need that extra 5%. So what they would do in a future levy, they would reduce that payment by that 5% in that, in that school year. So never, never do we pay more than what we, than what we are needing to pay. But we do levy 105% to make sure that we have enough for those years that some people don't pay and there's delinquent taxes. So hopefully that answers. Now, this is the full debt. Now, of course, we get a large chunk of that from IRRB to help pay off our debt. And then we also qualify for a large amount of state aid to help pay for that. So not all of that $11 million goes towards our taxpayers. It's more like about $1.5 million goes towards our taxpayers. The rest is through the IRRB grant and through state aid.
Couple of questions from me, Spencer. So the OPEB, we refinanced in 2017, but we consolidated after that, and so we each had our different OPEB amounts. What did we do since refinancing in 2017 when we consolidated?
This is the same amount that was consolidated then, and it gets spread out to the entire school district.
Did it have any kind of an effect when we consolidated our OPEB debts from the two different districts?
I would have to look in on that. I know we had Ellers up telling us when we combined how those would all work.
Okay.
And I can, I can dig up that information and get that sent.
No, you don't have to do that. I just wondered how that worked when we consolidated, because you said we refinanced in 2017. I don't know if the Virginia district did or Evlith Gilbert, and if there was any effect or not when we consolidated. The other question I have is on the school building bonds, principal and interest. If I remember correctly, we got those bonds at, what, 4-point-something percent interest?
That sounds right. Again, I'd have to look exactly what it is.
I think we, we upped it in the resolution to go up to 4.5, but it came in below that.
Yes.
But, so, do you know what the bond rate is now? I believe it's less than a half a percent for these same types of bonds?
I don't know what the current rate, like if we went out right now to sell bonds? I don't know what the rates are.
Okay, I checked Ellers, and I've been following along since consolidation in our bonds. And that interest rate went down and down and down. And so we are actually paying a pretty high percentage rate for those bonds, compared to if, I'll just, I'll just say it because it's my opinion, compared to if we had worked out the details of consolidation first and then consolidated, our debt and those bond, that bond interest would have been probably four times less.
Spencer?
That's the only observation I have to say.
Ellers takes care of adjusting all of our rates and suggesting when we should renew or correct?
Yes, as far as refinancing?
Yes.
Yes, and we're not eligible to refinance for several more years. You can't refinance these whenever, whenever you want.
Thank you.
I thought the rate on those was in the twos.
I'll have to look at what that is, and I can bring that back.
Yeah, if you'd let me know, please.
Yep.
Any other questions for Spencer? Thanks, Spencer. I think you're off the hook now.
Thanks.
Agenda item 5.5 is from our superintendent, Dr. Schmidt.
Thank you, members of the school board. I'm going to give you a couple of brief updates. The first one has to do with the building construction. On the Laurentian Elementary construction, just so you know, we are getting closer to being finished. They are going to shortly start working on the punch list. And they have another punch list that they will work on in December. But once they work through those punch lists, then they will be through. And so we're getting to the punch list stage on the Laurentian Elementary. Furniture has been ordered. It will be here. It'll be assembled sometime starting in January, February, that timeframe. So just want to let you know about that. On the North Star Elementary, all of the designs have been sent to the state of Minnesota. There's a formal process for that. We do need to get approval from the state of Minnesota. So all of those designs, drawings are all now to the state of Minnesota, and we are now waiting to hear back what the state of Minnesota says. We're a little ahead of schedule on that one, because normally that's something that is done about during the bidding process time. But we're able to get a head start on that one. We still are planning on the bidding going out in January. So you will see, Mr. Gallagher will be here again before the holidays talking to you about the bids. And so we're anticipating those to go out in January. And then those will be opened and received at the end of January. And then we will see where the bids are at. On the high school, as almost everybody has seen in the community, the turf fields on the baseballs and the softball fields are getting quite a bit of attention. You're getting jealousy from actually, from the some metro schools, because some metro schools don't have fields like what you are about to get for your kids and students. The JV baseball field is done with turf. The JV softball field is done with turf. And the varsity softball field is done with turf. They're now rolling over to the high school to put the turf on that field. And let me say this. These are very visible landmarks for everybody to see, and the lights. What's invisible a little bit, but the public will see, are the academic wings and what's going on inside the building. So I don't want anybody to have the belief that we're designing a high school athletic academy. We are not. We just happen to have a gorgeous setting, but the academic wings- to have a gorgeous setting, but the academic wings, when the people get in there and get to see them, they are really going to like the academic wings. They're just not as visible as the fields right now. But yes, you are getting jealousy from the metro schools because they're saying, hey, we don't even have a JV baseball field that looks like this. We don't even have a JV softball field that looks like this. And a part of this is the environment, surrounded by trees. You see water. That's a lot of what's creating that, oh, my gosh, this is a gorgeous field. And so it's a tough site, but everything that makes it a tough site also makes it a great site, as you heard Angie talking about the views from one of the, two of the academic areas in the elementary school. So that's kind of my brief update on the building construction. Any questions from board members about the construction?
Any progress on the track?
Oh, any progress on the track? Yes, because I know you're very interested in exact distances, shot, put, all of that kind of stuff. So yes, we are still getting the information from DSGW. They're the main ones who are working on the track. I assume you're talking about exactly where the long jump pit is, where the triple jump pit is, distance where the high jumpers start, and where the pit will be?
Exactly.
Yep, we're still getting that for you.
Are they going to put the fences around the baseball fields yet this fall, or is that not scheduled yet?
If they are able to, yes, they're going to get them done. But they really want to get the turf in first, and then if they can, they'll get the fences in. If we have a early winter, no. If we have a late winter, maybe.
And I see they've got the lights up for the football field. Is there any other updates you can give on that as well?
Oh, on the football field, the football field will be one of the last ones finished because right now, if you go up there, you'll see big piles of rock that they've crushed. And they're using those rocks and moving them to other places. And so the football field will actually be one of the last things done. The high school might actually be done a little bit before the football field is finished because that'll be the very last thing that's finished. But it's going to be a very memorable football field because when you're sitting in the stands and looking at it, and by the way, that was a great fantastic crowd on Friday night for the football game, but when you're looking at from the stands, you're going to see the trees around, and in the right corner, you're going to see rock wall with the cuts in the rock. And it's going to be a football arena like nothing else from a spectator point of view. It's going to be a great sight with a football field. Any other questions on building construction process? I know, I do a poor job of Pat Gallagher's imitation, but he'll be back. The other thing I just want to let the board know is give a quick update on COVID numbers. Several weeks ago, the COVID numbers that you heard, we had 44 students who had confirmed COVID at that time. That wasn't from the start of the school year to that point. It was actual COVID cases at that moment in time. Last week, the numbers were updated on the website, and so we currently have 22 COVID cases, actual code confirmed COVID cases. So the numbers have dropped by about 20. You can attribute that to luck. You can attribute that to masks. It's hard to make a causality statement with such a short period of time. But the numbers have gone down. For giving the example of where we're at today, today we had seven students identified with confirmed COVID cases. This is, the physician says you have COVID. The case comes back, you have COVID. The test comes back. So we have seven today. Four of those were at Virginia High School, and the rest were just kind of scattered throughout the district. We are starting to slowly see more cases at the high school, Virginia High School. Now, keep in mind, there's about twice as many students at Virginia High School, so you would expect more COVID cases coming out of Virginia High School. But nothing like at all we saw with the sixth grade in Gilbert. And we have, unless I'm mistaken, I think we have zero or maybe one COVID cases at Gilbert right now. So I just wanted to let the board know so you had the latest COVID numbers.
So Noel, please refresh my memory. So when we voted, the majority voted to mask at the last meeting, I don't remember, did we, was the criteria the number of cases, or was it just masking period and not masking?
As far as when to go away from masks?
Right.
In the plan, the recommended number to consider as a benchmark was 30 per 100,000, the one that St. Louis County uses. So we're right at about, I think we're at between 80 and 100, depending what part of St. Louis County you live in and happen to be in. The numbers here are basically double, almost double, not quite, what they are in Duluth. But this right here, this is the epicenter of where we're just happening to have more COVID cases right now. But you're right, Director Sorkin, 30 was the number in the plan that the board approved.
Okay, so are we not going by local numbers versus county? I mean, St. Louis County is a large county.
No, you haven't changed anything. I'm just telling you what the actual student numbers were for Rock Ridge.
Exactly.
That's different than what St. Louis County uses.
And the county numbers are broken down by St. Louis County, and then you have Duluth, which is a lot lower than either central St. Louis County or northern St. Louis County right now. And I don't know if we're in northern or central, but we're kind of...
Yeah. I know it's always been divided up the north and south of St. Louis County and Duluth and everything, but I guess I get, just wondering, our cases are, almost half is what, half of what they were. Time to reconsider our masking mandate.
This is not about masking at this time. He was just giving us an update, and you're skewing the numbers like you usually do.
Well, I tend to agree with her. The masks, the cases are cut in half. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to clomp on the other states, but it just, and using a formula that was used last year when there was no vaccine, there's a vaccine now. I don't know why that's a, that formula was being used.
And my purpose is just to inform the board what the numbers are. That's all I'm doing is giving an update on the numbers.
So Stacy, is John skewing the numbers too? And is he out of order speaking about that too? I don't see you jumping on him.
Anything else, Director Sorkin?
Well, I'd just like an answer.
On a lighter note, how do we get Angie that office with all the windows in it?
Well, Angie, I think you have to be very, very nice to the school board to get that deluxe office.
She's the first administrator that has actually asked for a specific room.
Right, and Angie...
Now we'll be deluged by the next meeting.
Yeah, you're right. And Angie, you know, I really, really like you, but you know, that's a student work room and for teachers and students to work. But yes, it's going to be a gorgeous room. And I have the next, I think you're going to, I have updates on the next couple of agenda items, so I'm just going to stay here.
Okay, so then do you want to jump into 6.1, the additional job assignment for Willie Speltz?
All right, thank you. We have had a series of administrators leave and go somewhere else. And sometimes this happens. Sometimes you get a cluster where for a variety of independent reasons, you just have some individuals who leave, and that's what is happening. So Michelle Ufford, I believe I can say this, she is our schoolwork coordinator. She has taken a job with a healthcare organization. It's a promotion. It's a big promotion, so it's one of those jobs where it's tough for her to turn down. So it does leave opening. So what we have done so far, we have posted for the position, we have interviewed, and then we've made a recommendation, and the board has put someone in those roles. In this case, we're going to suggest the board to take a different tact and to move Willie into that role because the fundraising is kind of winding down, but there's still, he still needs to do some fundraising on his end. But we feel that Willie can move into that role immediately, and he can fill that role because he is talking to the same group of people that Michelle has been. So some of the main people that Willie has been talking to about donations in the business world, it's the same group that Michelle has been talking to. The other part that why the board might consider doing this is if the board does this, you will save $100,000 because you won't have to refill Michelle's position from someone from the outside. We're just simply moving someone internally into that role, and so you also save $100,000. I think that's a wise move for the board to do. It's money you can save, and I believe we can have everything work as they're supposed to by simply having Willie for a while, who will be doing two jobs. He'll be finishing up the fundraising, but then he'll also move into the school business work coordinator role. That is our recommendation. As always, you're the school board. It's up to you as far as what you would like to do.
I have a question as far as that goes, Noel. It was anticipated that Willie was going to transition into a human relations or human resources, excuse me, position. And is that still the case? Or, I mean, to me, this makes a lot of sense, but what would the more longer term plan be?
Here's, what's currently happening is Debbie Wery is acting, doing the HR stuff. She is doing a fantabulous job. So I believe that Debbie can continue in that role and do what needs to be done. Yes, it adds more work for the principals, which is what we are trying to avoid by having, putting Willie in that role. But I think in light of where we are right now, at least for the rest of this year, I think it's a wise thing for the board to consider. If it doesn't work for whatever reason, then we can revisit at the end of the school year and take a look at it. But at least for this year, I'd say it would be a thought to do.
Is this something we need a motion on?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
I'd move.
So motion by Director Schobert, support?
Support.
Support by Director Anderson. Any additional discussion?
I have another question. When is Michelle's last day?
October 15th?
I think the information is October 14th is the effective date of her resignation.
14th.
I didn't see her quitting on the consent agenda, anywhere, her notice to approve her resignation, I guess. I just...
Well, that's an interesting question, Director Yohan, because she actually works for Nemo Jet. And then we, they bill us back. So she's actually resigning, that's a Nemo Jet situation. So you don't have to approve any resignation from Michelle Ufford because she doesn't work for you. She works for, really for Nemo Jet. So that's where her resignation and that process would go through.
So to follow up on that, we have a contract with Nemo Jet, not Michelle. I do understand that. So is that contract going to have to be dissolved?
The contract can be dissolved with 90 days. And so I've talked to Nemo Jet. They are perfectly okay if they stop providing services. And we're okay, if you approve Willie moving into that role, we're okay not needing those services from Nemo Jet.
Okay. And I remember that that was a five-year contract for her services. She into the second, year two of that?
Yep, but you've always had a 90-day out.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just thinking of Willie as the replacement now. So we will have to re-contract with Willie for those extra services, right?
Yes.
Okay, and work out those details. So won't we, we need those details too? I'm for this. I'm not against it, but, you know, actual contract to vote on. And then the salary, I believe you said we'd be saving about $8,000 because you would carry over his salary now of what, 108,000 to this new, these new duties?
Could you say the first part again? I didn't quite catch what you're saying.
What was the first part? That we would need an additional contract with Willie, but then the duties would be spelled out in the job description. And the pay, you said you would carry over his current salary and contract pay to this new position?
That would be my recommendation. You can make this difficult, or you can make this easy. I'm suggesting you do the easy part, which is to simply put Willie, whatever he's making in benefits pay, he keeps everything. He just has different job descriptions. And Willie knows I'm talking about this tonight. He's perfectly okay with it. He's looking forward to this very much. But I believe the board can simply move Willie into this role without needing to necessarily see a brand-new contract.
Yeah, and I'm glad you said that. After, maybe this year, we'll reevaluate it because if in the beginning we had a need for a five-year position, I think you're right, we need to reevaluate it at least after one year, and we may come to some different conclusion.
Right. It's hard from a board's point of view to see downside here.
Could that or should that be part of this motion, that we have a time period on this to reevaluate it after this year? Or is this, would this automatically include the remainder of her five years?
I'm suggesting don't pay attention to the five-year thing. That was only with Nemo Jet. You're, you have individuals who are on two-year contracts. They are not, they do not belong to a union. And so Willie's one of those individuals who's on those two-year contracts. So you can end his contract while following Minnesota state law at any point in time, once the contract is up. And so I believe his is up at the end of this year, and you'd need to relook at it anyway.
Okay, so that timing is good. I just think that it's important that we have a time, end time period on this.
And the motion is simply, like it says, to consider additional job assignments. And I agree that PD needs to be updated to include this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And then Agenda item 6.2 is consider approval of the proposed MOU for Rock Ridge traveling teachers.
All right, members of the school board, I'm still here. This one is, what's happened is that this has been great for kids. This has been great for kids taking the courses they wanted, but it's created some internal issues for us, which we believe the MOU will solve. Basically, we're Rock Ridge, but we still have two separate high schools that are separated by a number of miles. So what we did, and what the principals did, in order to give the kids maximum opportunity on their choices, because you can't offer the exact same course at each particular high school, what they did is they worked really hard to give kids their first choice. Well, what that did was it also caused more kids going back and forth between Ebbott Gilbert High School and Virginia, depending upon where the instructor was. And we also have more teachers going back and forth between the two high schools. The benefit has been kids have gotten the choices they wanted, for the most part. The negative is you now have more teachers moving. And so the MOU before you resolves the issue with mileage. It resolves the issue with teachers needing to use part of their prep or part of their lunch to drive from one high school to the other high school. So we've talked to them. This has been worked through with the school board committee, and I'm bringing it to you now for you to look or consider for your approval. It's pretty straightforward. It's only for the rest of this school year, and then we'll have to take a look at the next school year.
I'll make a motion to adopt the MOU.
Motion by Reardon.
Support.
Support by Anderson. Any additional discussion?
And the teachers' union accepts this, very language?
The teacher union has talked to me frequently about that, and yes, they are okay with the MOU.
Okay, no difference. Thanks.
Teachers have been really great. I just want you to know, they've been really great, even though there have been some difficult, challenging times with this.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, 6.3, consider amending the district COVID plan to not require masks for any students under two years of age, which is the recommendation from the Minnesota Department of Health.
So moved.
Motion by Anderson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Director Schobert. Any discussion?
So seriously, how many students under the age of two do we have? That's the most ridiculous amendment to a policy I've ever seen in my entire life. I mean, two, under the age of two and calling them a student?
Well, I suppose for ECFE?
No, it's early threes. No, it's early threes, which my son's a part of. I put a mask on his face, three seconds, he took it off. I mean, it was under five for the very, last year during the pandemic when it was an emergent situation. This is ridiculous, in my opinion.
Any other...
To call somebody under two a student, how many people does that affect?
Noel, could you shed some light on this? Yes, be happy to, Director Schobert. You do not have that many kids who are under the age of two. The bulk of your pre-K, early childhood, whatever terminology you want to use, they're three to five years old before they get to the kindergarten. So it's not, you may be looking at maybe a classroom, maybe two classrooms. But the reason why it's coming before you is you can see what the recommendation is from the Minnesota Department of Health. So that's why that is coming to you. If the board chooses, if you want to go higher, that's the board's prerogative. But we're bringing the two below to you, because that's the recommendation coming from the state of Minnesota.
So we have two-year-olds in the system? Is that ECFE?
You do, but not very many.
How many?
As I'm standing here right now, I don't know, but it's not, it can't be more than two classrooms. It's not very many.
The program's called threes. There's not, and this is under two. There can't be any.
You don't have very many.
Wow.
What was the requirement last year?
I know that two and under did not have to wear a mask. That was part of what happened.
I was told it was five and under.
You can change it if the board feels comfortable with five and under, four and under, three and under. You can do that. I've talked to Shannon, the early childhood, and she, her recommendation is for sure, two and under, we can handle the rest. It's not really an issue.
But this says under two years, so that would be one.
Well, you do get some. They're not very common, but you do get a few.
I'd make an amendment to Murray's motion to cancel the mask policy altogether, because in light of the new...
You can't do that. I'm sorry. You can't change it to the degree, you can't have an amendment to the degree that it skews the original motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries five to one.
Absolutely ridiculous.
6.4 is consider approval of the MOU between Boys for Health and Human Services and Rock Ridge Public Schools.
So moved.
Is that a motion by Anderson?
Support, Riordan.
Support by Riordan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda Item 6.5, consider approval of work agreements for the following. Andrea Lintola, salary and benefits for the controller, 2021, $64,000, and 2021, $22,000, $64,000. Spencer Oney, business manager, 2021, $138,313, and 2021, $22,000, $138,313. Mike Hoag, supervisor of maintenance custodians, 2021, $22,000,73,500. Sandy Vigor, salary and benefits for the bookkeeping assistant to the business manager, 2021, $60,000, and 21, $22,000, $60,000. And Stacy Lampus, superintendent secretary, 2020 to 2021, $56,993, and 21, $22,000, $56,993.
Riordan will make a motion.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Anderson. Any discussion?
I have some clarifications to make. Okay, so let's, you put them all together. I wish you had separated them. I have a question about business manager Spencer Oney. Like other, of the other contracts of other employees, the workday is 261 days and an eight-hour workday. Now, my question is, how many days per week equals 261 days?
Do you agree? I didn't hear that, Paulie. I apologize.
I can't hear.
Okay, I was wondering about the workdays for Spencer, 261, and that's the same number for other, other employees, and eight hours a day. But I was wondering how many days per week that is, and what does that, what's the equivalent of that? Is it five days a week or four days a week?
I think it's about 22 days a month, which is close to mirroring, yeah, 22 days a month, five days a week.
Five days a week. I, is, does Spencer work here Monday through Thursday and go to Ely on Fridays?
He doesn't do that anymore.
Director Sorkin, is the question regards to our business manager Spencer Oney?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that is what the salary is. People who are on two-year contracts are not union employees. Nobody, those people who are on those two-year contracts, most of them work more than they're supposed to work theoretically.
And I guess I would just point out that Spencer is answering questions and emails on the weekends, and he's...
Well, that's not, that's off topic. I'm sorry, Chair.
No, Director Sorkin, you send him emails on the weekends that he answers.
That's off topic. No, that's off topic.
It's not off topic, and I can, I can show the emails, but he's answering emails...
Point of order, you are out of order.
Why? Because it's true?
No, she isn't. She's the chair.
You are out of order.
I'm sorry, Director Schmidt, Dr. Schmidt.
Spencer did not have to answer any emails on the weekend. I never asked him on the weekend. That's, that's okay. Maybe if he's...
But he did.
Okay, could you answer me if he's working four days a week or five days in our district?
All of the contracts are based on five days a week, and you can see how many days a year they are based working on. They're all based on that. That's how the salaries are computed. That's all hauled, plus any holidays or vacation days. They're all computed on a base number of days of the week. Specifically in, let me say this, I'm only speaking for myself right now, you are lucky to have Spencer Oney as your business manager. Business managers are very difficult to find. They are very difficult to find high-quality business manager. The situation Director Sorkin you were referring to, that was an arrangement that the old Virginia school board had with Mr. Oney, and that continued when the Evelyn Gilbert School Board agreed that Spencer would pick up the business services. That agreement still continued. That agreement is still continuing, and the board has, you're getting, you're getting a good deal out of it. You will have great difficulty replacing Mr. Oney as a business manager. Business managers can literally go anywhere they want in the state. I believe Spencer is giving you full value for the contract and the hours he is supposed to work. I know he works many times at night, not when he's in the basketball season, I realize, but other times during the year. I know he works longer hours. He makes up to it. I do not feel like in any way Spencer Oney is abusing or taking advantage of the system.
And I never made any kind of reference to any of that. Business managers, you're right. That's a special kind of accounting, and you don't just walk into it even if you've got your accounting degree. This is nothing personal against Spencer. It's about the contract and, and days onsite and days not onsite. And 261 days at eight hours a day, if that means five days a week, or are you saying he's putting in 10 hours, four days a week, or what? And just, I just want a clarification there. And if that's the case, then do other employees have that flexibility?
They do.
Okay.
Yes, individuals on two-year contracts. Sometimes they're working at night. It doesn't say in their contract they start at eight and they're done at 3:30. That's how the two-year contract works.
And Stacy, if Spencer decides to work on a Sunday, I guess that's his prerogative, right?
Well, I guess that was my point, is that Spencer isn't shorting the district anything.
I never said he was shorting the district.
Please don't interrupt me, Director Sorkin.
Don't put words in my mouth.
But if he's putting his time in, then the school is getting a value. He would be irreplaceable. His assumptions on numbers and students and what we can expect to take in are on point. He has done the district a great service, and I can speak to going back to when we were just Virginia. He is a sound financial advisor, business strategy, and administrator, and we would be lost in a bad financial situation without him. So I will not stand here and have his reputation tarnished.
I am not tarnishing his reputation. I agree with everything you said about him.
Perfect, and there's nothing hard to say. He's worth every single penny he's giving.
This is about his contract, not about him. Do not put words in my mouth. I agree with everything you said about how valuable he is and how valuable the position is. Now don't be twisting things. I'm just trying to say...
If I, if I may interject...
It's not in the contract this way. I wanted a clarification. Thank you.
If I may interject, the motion is to approve his salary, and at a further date, we can ask how many days did Spencer Oney work for the district and put this to bed at that time? Thank you.
It was perfect.
This motion is about his contract, not just his salary.
No, it's about his salary, not his contract. We can approve his contract at a later date. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion, what was that?
No.
Motion carries five to one. The next board meeting will be October 25th at 6:00 PM here in the Goodman Auditorium. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Riordan.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Matt.
All right, well, meeting is adjourned.